Okay, I'll call the meeting, Byron. Right with the president. President, we do this in the United States of America. And through the Republic, we're just fans, one nation, under God, in invisible liberty and justice for all. All right. We'll start off. Uh, do I hear a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Sure, I would make that motion.
Second, who's second?
Second.
Any comments or questions by the board? Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Approve of minutes of eight fourteen twenty-three and eight twenty-one twenty-three for your motion to approve the matter.
Do you agree with this? It's a bit of a booing.
Thanks, Mike.
I would make a motion to accept it.
To accept, approve the minutes of eight fourteen and eight twenty-one? Do I hear a second?
I saw there's, yeah, no, I just saw something. Yeah, okay, I'm second.
Any comments or questions by the board? Call in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried, road report.
I don't have a lot tonight, actually. Dayton Hill, uh, we added some material, we graded that, uh, it's been a long time since we've, we've done anything with that road. Um, it's a class four owner maintenance road, but none of it still does have to have stuff done with it. And it did not get much attention last year, so, uh, we're trying to play catch up on that. We also graded endless Brook Road, Clark Hollow, and from one forty to the intersection of Clark Hollow and then on Hampshire Hollow Road. And meanwhile, while we were grading, uh, well, actually, while Andy was grading, Kevin and I did some cleaning around the bridges on endless Brook Road Bridge. You know, they've, you, you can't really maintain those with, with the mowing that we've done in the past, a lot of boom mower or whatever, so, so we got pretty aggressive with the poles on the fence, as I was, and went around them and, uh, opened them up, so.
Like, what is happening?
If anybody wants to see them, uh, but it, it makes a, it makes a, a good difference, I think, as far as visibility, and you can kind of see what condition the bridge is, you know, too, that way, so. We added material to Old Lake Road and Tucker Road. We had a tree come down two weeks ago, Thursday, on Lewis Road. And, uh, we cleaned that up to, to the best, it wasn't in the roadway for the weekend and everything, and we went back and tackled it. Three of us went back and tackled that on the following Monday morning, and we also cut a couple of trees that had been overhanging the road that, uh, you know, were, they were, they were right on within where the wing pile gets. Yeah, and the trees are bound to come down, you know, at the worst possible time ever, so, so we took care of those while we were right in that spot. And we are getting ready to do some RGP work, which we got approved for, so as soon as we get the roads to a satisfactory point, we'll be switching gears and doing some ditching, changing some culverts, and satisfying the municipal road general permit.
Oh, Watkins, what is that?
Watkins, Pond Hill Ranch Road and Pond Hill Road, and we have one segment within Dayton Hill Road, so we have to do, so.
You're bringing material out of the spots, it looks like you're starting to get a curve in the roads instead of.
Yeah, the roads are, are developing a little bit of a crown, and it, and it feels, feels, it feels good, because there was a lot, a lot of trips out with, with all the trucks loaded, just day after day, so. Yeah.
Lewis Road's done to get a few bumps on, a few paddles.
Yeah. Yeah, we broke that, so we've only graded Lewis Road, just because it's such a long road, we break that into three segments, so that you don't feel, uh, pushed for time to, to try to get it all done in one eight-hour day. Uh, that's just, it, the final product doesn't come out good when you rush to do, you know, however many miles of road that is versus saying, okay, well, I've got, I've got ten hours and I've only got to do a couple of miles, so you can, you can really make it come out good, so.
I can believe that.
Yeah.
From signs improvement.
I know a lot of people wondering about the side mowing, and that's not our guys.
Correct, the, uh, the boom mowing was, was, uh, hired out. Um, that is not our crew, the operator's not ours, the boom mower is not ours. Uh, it was contracted for this year, we're doing a trial run on that, see if we, to see how we like it. They started out with some really old blades, extremely used blades, so if you see splintered wood and, and things like of that nature and grass thrown, you know, that's, that's kind of the, the side effect of, of poor blade condition. Uh, I did send the owner, uh, an email, and, and he agreed to put new blades on it. Well, the operator was sharpening them every other day. They're just at the point where, that it's beyond that, so.
Took the pencil straight now?
Yeah, yeah, so, so the new blades, and, and the boom mower is actually down, if you haven't seen it running, and a little over a week now, it's been down, uh, we're working on getting that thing back up and doing it, and we'll be back at it. And when we do one forty, we'll also be, we'll be chasing the boom mower with one of our small vehicles, just for precaution for the operator and anybody coming around some of those blind turns. You could put the road, road mowing signs out, but, you know, you're talking about how many miles of road from here to Middletown Springs, you, you forget, you, oh, road work ahead or mowing ahead, you know, five miles later, you've forgotten that you saw that sign, and you never saw anything, so it's become a, uh, you know, a forgotten thing, so, uh, for safety, I think that'll be a good thing to do.
All right, anything else?
Uh, nothing new. Other than that, just, um, you know, don't know where we're really, where we're at with the, the roads that we, we're kind of hoping to find a conclusion as to what we're, what we're gonna do.
We'll discuss a little bit of that tonight. Okay.
You want to do that now?
Yes.
Yes, further discussion and reclassification of some town roads. Right? The Lennox Road, I think, would be one that we really should seriously look at. How's everybody feel about that?
Seems like a dangerous situation going up in there. The fact that it's already had caused problems in the past.
That's the one, that's, that's the number one, I, I think, out of all, all of these roads.
So if we discon- discontinue the plow, if somebody purchases that and brings it back into compliance with houses and stuff?
It comes back and we can reclassify it.
We can re- that's, uh.
So what we're gonna do is, we'll go up, we'll have to start the process to, to go through the gamut of declassifying the road.
Right, the upper part.
The upper part.
It'll have to be from the bottom up, it'll be the whole road.
Yeah, we'll, we'll start the process of declassifying that.
I mean, that you've got to decide whether or not you want to discontinue the road, whether or not you want to make it go from a class three to a class four. Whether or not you want to consider it a trail.
Class four, the only one you can say no winter maintenance on, the hell that works.
Or the, or the legal trail.
The legal trail, those are the only two, that can be no winter maintenance.
Correct.
The trail, we don't have maintenance on the trail though, do we?
No.
No.
Right, last four, we have maintenance on them. Or no?
Maintenance, a no winter maintenance.
Oh, I know, but we have maintenance, but the trail, it's.
Right, the trail, it's no maintenance at all.
I just want to reiterate, um, I'm not pushing to entirely get rid of these roads, I, I'm pushing to, to not have to send our plows into a dangerous position, so if we do the, the no winter maintenance, that would, that would be, you know, all I could ask for. And that's, that's perfectly fine, we have no problem in the summertime doing what needs to get done or whatever. Uh, it's just the, the risk of trying to get in there into, you know, like there, and then, um, Fairview, Fairlane, across from the golf course, at least, those, those two are probably the most.
I'd love to ask the board, Lennox Road would be number one, if anybody else have anything other concerns on, on the roads.
I just, if we change Lennox Road, I just think it's important that we notify those.
Oh, you have to, you have to go through a whole.
Yeah, because they're, those are the only two that we worry about, the ones at the top, it's nothing, I mean, I can see that, because I went up there, it's dangerous.
Yeah.
You're talking about from that road in, they don't have to have aware of the thing that.
Well, every, every road you're talking about, if you're gonna contin- if you're gonna consider any reclassification, you have to do certified mail so many days before you have to have a public hearing, you have to do a site visit, um, then you have to reconvene and take evidence, uh, then the board has to convene and make a decision on what to do about it.
Will that be able to get done by winter?
It would.
There's snowfalls in.
Uh, highly unlikely.
Really?
It takes a while, doesn't it?
It, it does take a while, um.
It could be completed during the winter, but before winter, winter can come in October. But just starting the process, that's why we have to figure out which roads we want to do. Lennox, let's do Lennox to begin with. Any others that you guys see?
Um, what's the one off, um, Lewis?
It's not actually a road.
It's a driveway.
It's off of Gorontown.
Gorontown, it's a driveway.
So I did do some research on that, um, there, there is a s- So at one point, that, there was a different bridge on that road, and they replaced, it was a wooden plank bridge, they replaced the, the bridge to where it is now. And apparently it used to be down there somewhere, there's a survey that's referenced, but I couldn't find it in, in the land records. But it appears from reading the, um, the, the order where the road was reclassified, it appears that that section that we're referring to as the Oliver Allen driveway, uh, the town agreed to keep that as a class four road, but there was nothing in the record indicating that the town agreed to plow it as a class four road. Then, and I, I think it was, from what I hear, anecdotally, it sounds like it was sort of one of those gentlemen kind of agreement things that just got carried over the years.
I mean, there's a house out in back, so you have the driveway here, and then there's a house out back, but they don't plow all the way to the back, correct? So you plow in, then you back, you back up? Yeah.
And he dumped snow right onto the, uh, his handicap.
By his ramp.
Yeah. It's all been pushed in, the quills.
Does it make any sense to?
Right.
So that's a, just a gentleman's agreement, maybe.
That, from what I could tell, I mean, no one's come forward with anything other than, and, I mean, the caveat is, I didn't do an exhaustive
Right.
title search on all of those two pieces of property when they did that, that bridge, there was two affected properties, I didn't do a forty-year title search on all of those, but the condemnation order speaks to the fact that the select board would need to, uh, request, keep that section of the road as a class four highway, but there was nothing from my limited research indicated why, why we continue to plow it, why we ever plowed it, for that matter.
And the plowing part is the part that's the dangerous part, and if it's a class four road, legally, we don't have to plow. Maybe we, we need to get a hold of the landowners on the road and tell them that we are, it's a possibility we are not going to continue plowing that road, it's a class four road. Okay? So we have Lennox Road, we'll have to do, start to, the gamut of, of doing that legally for a, a downgrade of a road. Any other one?
Uh, I mean, I think the board also has to give me direction on what, what we're doing.
But Lennox Road going down to a
Class four?
A four, or maintaining? If they, if the commerce point, if they, on the Lennox Road, all those trailers are in.
Yeah, true.
If something happens and somebody comes back, replaces those trailers, if we keep it a class four highway, we just don't winter maintenance. But we ma- keep it maintained during the year, you know?
Right, just to be ashamed to lose those nice sites.
And if something happens and they came back to the board and it ended up like the Palmeroy Road, where it would take a ton of money to redo that road.
Right, this is not quite that bad.
Maybe we need to be a little proactive on this one and keep it a class four road and keep the maintenance up on it, so we don't get caught like we did up there.
Right, it'll probably just wash out in the section, don't it?
Up on top, it washes out, yeah.
The final straight stretch, the final straight stretch, once you get around, you know, once you get around the left-hand turn, and you're on the straight stretch right to the very top, that whole, that whole area washes, but like, so if you, if you're sitting in that road and you look to the side, shoulders, shoulders, and what was the lawns for those homes are, are higher than the road is, so.
That could be fixed.
It could be fixed, we can add material to it, we can build up the road, we can ditch the sides. Um, we could start with ditching the sides and make the road passable, and, you know, put a crown on the road, and you know, the road may still be sitting a little bit lower than the lawns, but as long as there's a ditch that can continue.
To hold, take the water away from the surface of the road.
Back down more, hollow and across, and up out into the creek there, brook there, then, yeah.
So, look at down.
Well, I mean, I guess my point is, particularly if you think there's going to be some movement before, um, wintertime, I, I need direction now. I can't wait two more weeks, I can't wait four more weeks.
Well, Lennox Road, let's start, does the board agree with starting to drop that one? Start the process to drop it to a class four hi- a class four road.
Only on the upper part.
You can't, can you, we talked about that?
We can't.
How do you, how do you do the, how do you go from here to here, leave it, and then the upper part of the road?
That's, that's the only part that we're concerned about.
Well.
That's what we're talking about last meeting, that we can't do that.
If we go, if we take a tandem beyond the first corner, we're committed. It's, it's more dangerous to back down that thing than it is to finish out and go.
It's a nasty little one.
Yeah, and if we keep it, we need to do something around, about the turnaround. We need to make an actual turnaround at the top.
We need to make a causeway, and that would have to be at the top.
You mean, at the very bottom of the straightaway, at the final, you can't turn around there? There's no turnaround.
There's no turnaround, you have a house, a house on your street up, and it's.
You go right up and go down the flat part, up the hill, and it's a sharp turn, and then another, it's a hard S.
Yeah.
There's no place to turn.
I made a favor of starting the process on the whole segment.
How many houses are we going to affect?
Three?
Just three on the bottom, on the bottom, I can see that would be effective.
Yeah. Three, we need three on the bottom.
Two on the right, right, one on the left.
You got two on the left, one on the right. One before it starts up the hill, directly across from the field, go up. As you start to make the right-hand turn, you've got one that's diagonal off the left-hand side, and then as you go around the right-hand turn, but just before you make the left to the final stretch of the hill, you've got one right there at that, at that left-hand turn.
Right, see, I was thinking of, of having you guys turn, turn around right there.
Not enough room for a tandem.
Not enough room for tandem.
That's.
It's hard enough just doing it.
And you're also like this.
Yeah.
Yep, good job.
Yeah, I'm trying to pull it up right now.
They catch a sketch?
Yeah.
We start the process and we site visit. And we're gonna take evidence from the landowners too. You know, also, we gotta listen to the landowners. And we could end up like we did on the, um, Ames, Ames Road, Ames Hollow. We went from one longitude and latitude to another longitude and latitude and made that a, a, uh, trail instead of making the whole thing. But you have to start the process to make it to a class four highway, the whole thing.
I was checking on these roads where they were, and I ran across leading minutes from November of twenty eighteen, and it was when Ron Kelly, the supervisor, I mean, um, highway superintendent, and he said, I'm quoting this, Ron requested that the town consider discontinuing J Drive, which serves one house, Lennox Road, which serves one occupied house, and several uninhabited mobile homes. Discussion followed. Terry Williams made a motion to discontinue the roads stated. Town Kaludi seconded the motion, motion carried. I don't know if anything went beyond that, though.
It didn't, not for a reclassification, that's what we're talking about now.
Okay.
Now we're gonna start the legal process of declassifying the road.
So, nothing was done back then, even though it was decided that?
They would like to try and make it, make it, we just didn't, from then, there's a process you gotta go through legally.
Right.
So, yeah, but now it's a different board, so let's start it over. Well, now we're asking to start the process, Mary, of legally starting the process, which is certified letters from the landlord.
Okay, there's information too on the Oliver Allen's house. And again, uh, this was a year later in November of twenty nineteen. Ron Kelly discussed the fact that Oliver Allen's driveway is plowed by the town due to some deal the town made when they changed the bridge approach on that property. So what Paul has discovered is correct, but again, it's not writing.
Not in the writing.
Not that I found.
Not that you found, correct.
I didn't do a forty-year title search on two pieces of property either, so.
Well, thank you for that, now it's time to start it, the legal part of it, Mary. Okay, so you understand?
Yes.
All right, are you okay with it, Byron? Start it?
Yes, start, yes.
And you? Cheryl? Let's start the process on the Lennox, declassifying the road to a, or a class four highway. We'll start there.
How about, uh, the Allen, right, but the same thing there?
Well, it's, it's not in, it's a class four highway right now. It's already a class four highway, right?
From, I mean, from what I can gather, from what I found in the land records.
So, I have to talk to the landowners, she's telling that plowing is, are gonna happen by the, the town on that, because it is a class four highway. We don't have to continue winter maintenance on it. We continue maintenance on the road, but not in the winter.
Okay, so what about um, Dayton Hill's driveway?
Who's?
John Hill's Dabs, up by Stonebass, Stonebass. Yeah, that's Fair.
Is that Fair, Fairview Lane?
Yeah.
That's the top.
That is clearly, but.
Did you find out about that, if that was a?
It's, it's, it's chomped the road on our highway mound, so.
One of the, the top one, not the first one by Frank Fries, but the second one, has a path that goes all the way down to the, to the lake, right?
No. It, 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 it dead ends, and it drives.
So they're both dead ends, because when I went up, we didn't get, okay.
Now you're talking about Fairway, still drew a straight shot right up there, right?
Yeah, we would still be doing, we would still be going up and doing the top, and we would do Ridgeview North and Ridgeview South. But if, if this is what we can do to share a part of that one particularly. This first one particular fairway is because it's, it's incredibly hard to get into or out of. And I have turned the tandem around one time, just, you know, twenty-point turn on Ridgeview South.
Yeah, this is.
But, but fair.
Well, either one, that's what, when I went through it, it's been here and here. And just got it back out, because it's so narrow right to here.
If you look, look at the width of the main road going up in there, there's, it's barely, it's barely a two-way, you know, so.
So is Fairway a class three road?
I think so, yeah. I think it's called Fairview Lane, isn't it?
Fairview?
You got it.
Very.
Fairway Lane South, and Ridgeview Lane South, those are both the ones.
So it's Fairview that you wish to do.
It's a drive.
Fairway.
It's a drive. I suspect the owners would be fine.
Well, if it's a class three, we have to.
Fairway Lane South.
Fairway Lane South.
But it just goes off from Fairlane, it just goes all the way in, and then you have to back up, there's no way to turn around, because you're in this drive when you back, back up. And then you go up to the top and go all the way, come back up.
Right.
Because both of those go, on the left side, go out and then stop.
Frank's does have three houses. And that is a little bit of a, a better road, he doesn't like, like, like the, get into it.
It's hard, it's very narrow right there.
It's very narrow.
That's a big, uh, hole right there, right, at the end, yeah.
It's, right.
Again, if the board, if the board decides to, to start the process of downgrading, the legal process, during that time, we'll, we'll visit, site visit.
Right, yeah.
We'll tell certified mail to the landowners, they'll give testimony, and then we'll make a decision. Do you wish to do that?
I don't think you can do one without the other we're talking about, when you go up fairly good, get both driveways on the, on the left, right, you're talking about just one, and then both.
Yeah, it's Fairway Lane South.
And Fairview Lane South.
Because there's two, there's two.
Fairway Lane South.
Fairway Lane South, correct, right.
But the one up above it is the other one, right?
That's Ridgeview Lane South and Ridgeview Lane North.
And you do those, you said?
We do those, yeah.
Yes, they do.
We're just talking about Fairview and South, because of that.
Yeah, that's, that is by far the hardest of, of all of them to do, to get into, to get into and or out of. Every single time, start there, start with that first one.
Start with the first one, Fairway Lane South.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Yes.
And, and also, Cheryl, let's start the proceedings, follow on Lennox and Fairway Lane South.
And there was one more, that's like, go ahead.
Why are we doing mass life drive?
What, plowing or requesting to get rid of it?
Requesting to get rid of it.
It's a wicked time turning around up in there.
Can we make a causeway?
I think the, the gentleman that owns the land is actually here, so if we could, uh.
You know, let me explain. I, I do have experience in building roads, I built, uh, a logging roads in Central County, Pennsylvania, the model horn, switchbacks, for other trees. There's a few soft areas, but not much, uh, for a turnaround. Nobody been stuck. And we would, uh, do any excavating, put any stone in and pay for ourselves, and that's both.
To keep it a class three highway?
Yeah. And basically, I maintain road anyway, for now, and take the trees down.
How many houses?
They're just us and the north.
So, you know, it's been done for a long time, at least fifty years, taken care of, and the road really, I'm not complaining, but it's never had any attention other than plowing and mowing, which plowing takes what? Less than five minutes, five minutes at the most. So, we're talking like, with everything in a year's time, like two hours a year. And then like, if we can just do something to help you guys, so you can go up, now you got a bigger truck, which to turn around, I get it, I mean, but, you know, but we can help out, you guys can go up, turn around, come back in. I mean, it's a burden on us, especially for me, because, I mean, the road, uh, the old road is right there, so I gotta go like ninety feet, and I got, I snowball my driveway, and I don't really want to buy a pickup. The biggest thing for me and neighbor is just the winter upkeep. And really takes no time and no second.
So we can.
Saying it when you need, that's fine.
We can make a place up there to turn around, you got mowing it, no problem.
Yeah, we could step on up that turnaround.
I don't, I don't want to fight with the town over this, it's like, I don't even want to be here even talking about this. It's really, I mean, I've been irritated bad for a couple of weeks now, over this, because it's like, can't legal bargain over this, even coming down here and listening to this.
Nobody's over you.
No, but, you know, but it's a setting mark, you know, it's like, it's been taken care of forever, and, and the road is really nothing, and if we can work out a small problem to keep things. to keep things.
Yeah, oh, that's great. Sounds like we can work it out, so make it up a list.
And another thing, not jumping again, but if you ever have a problem with a road, I wish they would, you know, you said something offhand to me a couple months ago, and I just kinda blew it off, I just thought, you know, I never thought about it, 'cause I never had to deal with that, it's, it's just been taken care of forever and ever, and then they add them, and, and I go, you know, if you have a problem with these roads, stop and talk to the landowners, say, hey, we're looking to do in this, like, you know, I don't really wanna near John Letterline mailbox.
Well, the thing is, is this, this process starts, it starts so that the landowners know that we're looking at it. That's like giving the testimony.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, we do a site visit, and like you guys are saying, if there's room there, we can work it out, or we'll work it out.
I just, I'm willing to, to give Will and neighbor two, for just, even if we can just get the road plowed and saved.
Plowed, I'll do the trees.
And the mowing?
I've fifty-five years in the tree business. And I've already taken down twenty, over twenty trees up to two feet in diameter on Jones Ridge, one back to Maslight Mill on our side, we own some land.
Yeah, I've been all up through there in the years past, yeah.
So I would do all the trees on our property and, uh, Norrins property too, even, even the brush hanging, or all of that. And like I say, any excavate or something put in for a turnaround, show me what needs to be done, it'll be done. We pay for it.
You can work with that.
Yeah, we can.
Let's take that, take that off the list, you guys.
Yep. And like I said, if you ever have a problem with our board, please come see us first.
Yeah.
You know, south of my house, I, I told Paul, or Will, where are you going, have you given me a call, I never.
Yeah.
I didn't get, I didn't get a call.
That's, that's my mistake. Paul did relay the messages, not on that.
Like I said, I really don't wanna fight over this stuff, it's a small road.
And we're not, we're not fighting, we're just discussing it, and.
You know, I don't ask much from the town, I don't give anything to the town other than that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry if we, you know, made you stress out over this.
Well, it's, it just got upset me, because like, what, where did this come from?
But also, lots of times, if you discuss it rationally, things work. And this, this will work.
It, it did start when all the tracks got updated to a larger size.
Thank you.
Right, plus that's, that's not our fault.
No, 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 it's not.
Nobody's gonna ask, you know, I mean, we don't have a current view of the situation, but that's, that's a burden that they brought upon until now, we're gonna give it to us.
My walls haven't hit in fifteen years, but they got bigger equipment, the weeds hit them.
All right, we'll take a look at that, if it needs to be hit.
Thank you for listening to me around.
Take care of that one. Got it, you guys?
Yep.
Thank you. Any other ones? I think that was it, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we got our, we got a plan, we're gonna do Lennox, Fairway Lane South, we'll start with those on looking at, uh, uh, downgrading them, and continue from there. All right?
Yep.
Hold me, Rescue Squad discussion, I don't see anybody here tonight.
I got an email from them Sunday afternoon that they'd like to come on September eleventh.
Table that till September eleventh? Motion to table the Rescue Squad discussion until September eleventh?
I would make that motion.
Oh, I hear any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Tobacco license for the Dollar General.
So, you recall that, that was tabled at their last meeting? So I had, uh, the clerk do some research, I think the question was, how are they gonna make sure that, um, that the tobacco is not accessible without having someone assist you? Uh, and so she checked with the, the, um, Department of Liquor Control. Department of Liquor and Lottery, and he just cited the statute that said, person holding a tobacco license may only display or store tobacco products or tobacco substitutes behind a sales counter or in any other area of establishment inaccessible to the public or in a locked container. So essentially, they came back to her and said, that's the liquor control's authority to make sure that they abide by the statute. Uh, they, they also went on to say that the DOL requires that all licensees have a responsible person present, present on site. Given the benefit of the doubt that they will understand that anyone wishing to purchase tobacco products would need to be given tobacco product by the staff member, I'd check and run up by the staff member. This is how it works at other locations with self-service checkout scanners.
I don't even know if we're still self-service checkout, we're there or not, I don't even know.
It is, but there's someone that is usually staff there that they don't like radio, unless probably if you needed to get surprised out.
As a manager, that you could say, look, I didn't something.
Or like stalls, whatever, lock.
So it has like, they have a place, and it, it's the same one that they have over in Perry that was mentioned earlier.
Yeah.
So it seems like they've got something that has worked for other stores, and that they, they.
Probably to be on control, but they can't like control it, so it's not something we have to.
And we just sign, sign permission. Okay. So, do I hear a motion to sign a tobacco license for the Dollar General?
Yes, I would make that motion.
I hear us.
Okay.
Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, Rutland Regional Planning.
Um, there's one other, um, liquor license that the clerk asked me to present to the boards, um, this morning, this afternoon. This is for the new, uh, to-be owners of Otto's, um, the Cone Point General Store, which is currently under contract to close on September fourteenth. Uh, the new owners have been advised by the Department of Liquor and Lottery that there's a, up to four to six week turnaround time, so. Advise them to, um, apply locally for their, um, liquor license. Um, there's a letter in here from RNC Realty that essentially says they're selling to this new entity.
So we can roll down before they officially?
Yeah, it still has to go through the liquor, uh, Department of Liquor.
Just pretty much like those.
The same class license as the previous one?
They're applying for a. Second-class license, a first-class license, excuse me, first-class restaurant slash bar license. Outside consumption permit, tobacco license, and tobacco substitute endorsement license. So essentially, it's gonna be operated, but the way it was before Otto's closed, where you could go in and buy beer or wine, uh, but they're also applying so that you could consume beer and or wine on the premises, both inside and outside now.
Yeah, Otto's before, you couldn't have it outside.
Yeah, you could buy it and not have it, yeah.
So, she asked me to present it to the board.
How do you feel about it?
I'm pleased.
I'm happy that someone's gonna be there.
Mark, you okay with it?
Okay.
Are you a motion to, uh?
Yeah, I would make a motion.
To approve the liquor license?
Yeah.
Any comment, any comments or questions by the board?
What'd you say, was September fourteenth is closing?
That's one that is currently scheduled to close.
Okay? All in favor? Any, any opposed? Motion carried.
They are pretty good people.
Is it called a fucking, is it fucking chicken?
No, bowling.
I watched the sunset.
That's the wrong name.
It's the Rooster LLC operating the Fucking Cafe.
Oh, Fucking Cafe, there was something fucking in there. Maybe there was not chicken there, meant something, fucking, yeah.
Wow.
That tongue twister.
I mean, let's look at it differently, how about chicken get across the road? Okay. Anything else, Paul?
Uh, not at this minute, no.
Rutland Regional Planning Commission?
I know Sarah's on line up, Sarah, do you have anything to add? Hi, Sarah. You're breaking up, Sarah.
Can I hear you? Can, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Better? Okay, I'll, I'll try to speak more loudly. Um, so the TAC and the regional board meetings will resume again in September, um, but in uh, regional planning type endeavors, um, I was invited by Polton Meadowie Natural Resources Conservation District to attend a Lake St. Catherine Waterstead project review, uh, for stormwater mitigation this Friday, so I'll be doing that. Um, and A and R is also hosting an informational meeting on, uh, three-acre stormwater permitting in September, so I just RSVP'd to go to that, um, in Rutland. Um, and that's it. I do have some Poltony business updates that I could just go through really quickly, just wanting to make sure that everyone knows about the, um, the open house that was at Hope Haven this past weekend. Uh, there's a naturopathic doctor that has been practicing since March, um, Sonia Drewan, and she had, hosted an open house, which, um, Cheryl and Paul and I were at, and some others, it was really lovely, and, um, it, it's a really exciting addition to, to Poltony. Um, so that happened, Porcupine Bikes is hosting an open house this coming Sunday. Um, they're having a, going into business sale, thirty percent off of their inventory for the whole weekend, um, and a ribbon cutting that's happening Sunday at two P M. With a barbecue to follow after that. And, um, we were just talking about Otto's, uh, I think probably everyone knows, but I wanna make sure that Otto's has sold, and, um, it will, it's being advertised on social media as Cone's Point Country Store and the Clockin' Cafe. That's it.
There are any, any movement on maybe financing towards a new town garage?
So I submitted, uh, for MARP, the Municipal Energy Resilience Program, four buildings for the town and one building for the village. Uh, the program allows up to five buildings, and we had to prioritize the buildings that would be assessed. Um, so for the town, we submitted a town office, the town garage, the Young Heart Senior Center, and Stonebridge, not necessarily in that order. Um, so I am waiting for the, uh, program administrators to respond as to next steps, but essentially, they'll be coming out to do an assessment of those properties sometime this fall. And after the assessment is received back by the town and the funding source opens, there will be, um, funding available for, uh, energy efficiency upgrades for those buildings. Um, and so the next step, um, for the town garage, I think is, is really this, uh, related to the site itself, so that's why I'm doing some additional research on, um, land planning for stormwater and stormwater mitigation and runoff and that type of thing.
Or where the garage is now.
Right.
Okay. Great.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Okay.
Anybody have questions for Sarah? Thank you very much.
Absolutely, my pleasure.
I wanted to ask you, have you heard anything about, uh, the engineers looking at, uh, the trestle down here?
I did speak with them last week, and he, essentially, like a lot of other, um, companies and, and state agencies, got bogged down assisting with the flood, the flood damage, um, throughout Vermont. So he had put it on the back burner, he's now put it back on the front burner, he, he has a draft of the, um, RFP done that hi- his assistant did, said he needs to fine tune, uh, but he did readily admit that he got sidetracked without the flooding, that he was helping, uh, the state of Vermont and different municipalities address.
But that's coming back on.
Right.
Um, what, how about the, um, the bridge? Any, do you know?
What bridge?
On the Bravo Bridge?
Um, I'm hesitant to say that they're, they are expecting some delay past September twenty-second of twenty twenty-three.
That's kind of.
I took an email recently, I thought they, I thought it was going on track.
They just sent one, yeah, I just got a little.
I've been pressuring them to give me, uh, a, a concrete answer, because I know the word on the street is that there's gonna be a delay. Um, and they did indicate that they, like, for instance, uh, the subcontractor that they're currently waiting for has been delayed due to the weather, uh, I think a week, or almost more than two, a week. Um, so they, they were, they will not give us, uh, we think until X amount date, um, but it does look like there's going to be some, some delay, but they won't, at this point, they're not gonna speculate when. Um, they also indicated that they, they do not rewrite the contracts, uh, that the, that they will let the contractor finish the job and then assess whether or not there's monetary penalties for unexcused delay, but there are excused delays due to weather in the contract, so.
I'm not done worrying about that.
That's, that's all I know at this point. I wish I could say it's gonna be done, you know, by a certain such day, but.
It seems to be moving along.
Looks really good.
They had to go backwards.
It's just the workers should not be telling all the townspeople everything that's going on, and they come back to us saying, this is what I heard, and I'm like, ah, we're not down at the bridge, so they're telling everybody else, I'm not, I'm not there, they didn't tell me that. So they do talk, what they probably should. Other people might like it, but I'm like, I don't know that, they didn't tell me that.
It's human nature.
No. Well, this makes it.
I mean, I can see there.
Looks good.
It is sentry.
Okay. Anything else, anybody wants to ask, Paul?
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Anything else, Paul?
No, not at the moment, I know there's some public comment, I'm sure.
Yeah, that's coming up next, public comments and concerns. Neil, good to see you again.
Yeah, good. Get around a little bit. Uh, I wanted to bring to, uh, potential of boards concerns I have about zoning compliance. And I've, uh, had back and forth, and had a lot of discussions with Paul about this, about the Dollar General store. Uh, you all remember that they applied for a permit, the DRB denied it, said it wasn't in compliance, and modified their application on appeal to our Melocord. Town had a lawyer, several neighbors showed up to oppose it, we had a trial. And the testimony was that he would comply with a bunch of specific requirements of the zoning bylaws, also do some other things to address some serious safety concerns that arose in hearings. So he got a permit based on those representations. They opened for business, I think, back in March, but he does not comply with the bylaws, only with the court decision. Now specifically, there's three or four areas. One is fencing. Bylaws require a fence to screen the parking lot from residential properties like mine and others to the west. In the zoning application, he said he would build it, he put a site plan out there, showed a six-foot-tall fence, and the testimony in court said it would be a six-foot-tall solid stockade fence, so screened so that headlights wouldn't flare through it, and wouldn't get the noise from the parking lot. He said he would do that, he got a permit. They never built that fence.
Was there a time limit on that, Neil? I don't, I'm trying to think of the zoning, is there a time limit, like how much time it was given to, to build that?
Well.
Was that written in there?
He has five years to build before he can open up his, his, uh, his proposed use. These are bylaw provisions that are proposed, set forth in order to protect neighboring properties.
From the court.
From the bylaws and the court. And so, the idea that he can open up and wait five years. and wait five years to build what he's supposed to build to protect the neighbors from his activity doesn't make any sense. So he didn't do the fence. They also said they would block off the Church Street entrance because there was a lot of discussion about pedestrian safety and traffic safety. He testified that the Church Street entrance would be closed off with tree plantings. The court said that good, that addresses the safety concerns. Got a permit. He didn't do that. All he did is he dropped a bunch of railroad ties at the entrance. Aside from not looking very good.
Well, they want to be with the trees to be aesthetically pleasing to the eye. I could see that.
Yeah, well, and it's also supposed to prevent pedestrians from walking through the parking lot, coming down Beacon Street or Church Street. That was the discussion. He said, "Okay, I'm going to block it off. They're going to have tree plantings there." Well, that railroad ties there, it looks like hell. And I've seen cars try to drive around those. One of these days, someone's going to get hung up on that stuff. There's another requirement in the bylaws for screening trees. Supposed to be a landscape buffer, two rows of staggered evergreen trees, 10 feet on center between residential properties. And on the north side of the building, that means my house and the Merwin's house. And he said he would put those in where there's room because we agreed that behind the Romero's house, there isn't room because the building goes right up to their property line. But he hasn't put in the required trees on the north side of the building. He also said he would put the trees in on the west end of the building to screen the schoolhouse apartments. That hasn't happened either. In their application, they had testimony that all of their truck deliveries are going to be down that alleyway on the south side of the building, where there's a loading ramp. They were supposed to establish that they met the decibel requirements with trucks. They didn't, the expert they had did not study any truck noise other than like a panel truck. And the judge said, "Well, since you're going to have it down on the alleyway, it's going to be blocked by the buildings. Sound wouldn't be a problem. I'm not going to require that." Well, I'm here to tell you that most of the truck deliveries are out in the front parking lot. Coca-Cola trucks, Pepsi trucks, no tractor-trailer, semi trucks. Dollar General sometimes parks out front. Sometimes they back down. So that's a problem. Now, what I took the liberty of doing is I took a copy of the court decision where he recites everything that the applicant said they were going to do and why it was required for safety and why they required to comply with the bylaws. And I highlighted all those sections with comments about it not having been done.
So Neil, you're saying, since I haven't read the whole thing, you're saying that all that was supposed to be done before he opened the doors?
Yes, yes, that's right.
So, well, I mean, one thing you don't tell the board, Mr. Reeland, is that you also had conversations with the town attorney about this.
Yeah.
And that I've had conversations with the town attorney about this. And I really don't know if I want to get into the, what the legal advice would be, but, you know, our bylaws say, first of all, we don't have a mechanism to require certificate occupancy, which you wouldn't get until all your permit conditions are met. The current iteration of the bylaws, in the iteration of the bylaws that were in place when this application was presented to the Development Review Board over many years ago, says you have two years to start your permit and five years to finish your permit. I don't think the bylaws say you can't occupy your premises until everything is done. So, I mean, that's the issue that... That's the issue that, you know, is a potential of why we're still here. I mean, we had some, hesitate to say assurances, but some indication that the applicant had been away, was going to take care of some of these issues. And the town attorney spoke with his attorney, the developer's attorney, recently. So you can come and make your public comments about it.
But it sounds like our town attorney is talking with his attorney about these...
Well, the town attorney said common sense approach would be that since it's open for business, all conditions of permit should be complied with. So I agree with that. And just think about it.
Other than five years since the judge made his decision, we've got these...
No, but there's no application except the key.
It's when the judge makes a decision.
That's...
We've got these requirements in the bylaw that are for the protection of the neighbors and for protection of the public.
Yep.
So it makes no sense to say you don't have to put those things in for five years and you can open up your business and wait five years before you do it. And this guy isn't going to do anything until he gets pressured to do it. And I ask you to consider protecting the integrity of our bylaws. We've got planning commission that works very hard on drafting bylaws and bylaw revisions. We've got the DRV that follows the rules and issues permits or issues conditions based on the application. I don't think the town should be in a position of saying, "Well, we're not going to worry about that. We just got to..."
I don't think that's what the town is saying, Mr. Reeland, and I take objection to that.
Well...
As I discussed with you this morning, there was two alternatives that our town attorney advised. And who knows where it's going to go, right? But you chose that you wanted to come here and discuss it with the board, which is your right to do. I just think, you know, you're potentially showing cards that maybe you don't need to show in a public meeting, but that's your prerogative, I guess.
Well, it's been four months since we had that initial conversation. And the attorney said he's been away on vacation. He'll get around. Well, it's four months. He hasn't done a damn thing. He hasn't built the fence. He could do that in a day. He could plant the trees. He could do that in a day. Yeah, I tell you, he's not going to do it until someone pushes a few buttons.
Okay.
And so I'm suggesting, and I've talked this over with Paul many times, that I think what the town needs to do is stand behind the bylaws, issue a notice of violation to the owner and to Dollar General because they're bound by all the terms of the permit when you're occupying it. Dollar General gets a bit, maybe they'll put some pressure on the owner to comply.
Can I add something to that? There's something in our government that it's like a fence viewer position. I don't know how it's filled exactly, but Polkney, that's one of the things, that's one of the positions that, just like there's the select board, there's the dog wardens, there's the tree warden, but there's some, like, there's a position that's the fence viewer. I've never actually heard of someone occupying. I just saw him in the statue recently, but I wonder if that's something that maybe there could be teeth for that role, like where you could actually do something compared to just, I don't know. I mean, it's just a thought. I haven't looked into it much because I was like, fence viewer? Who wants to just walk around and measure the size of fences? That sounds pretty boring, but it might be a way to do something.
I think the position's probably still open. Paul had taken applications for the fence viewer position.
I understand the fence viewer historically was the person that mediated disputes between farmers about repairing fences and your cows are getting over on my property, et cetera, et cetera.
Someone like that.
Okay, Neil. We will take that under advisement.
Appreciate the time. Thank you for your consideration. Well, Paul's got it. There's a copy of the site plan that shows the fence being constructed.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we're not seeing or not knowing what's going on behind the scenes. We will take that under advisement. Thank you.
Well, one other thing I should add, and I know Paul knows, is there's... Vermont case law, Supreme Court says if there is a violation, town does not have discretion to let it slide. They have to take action.
Yeah.
Couple cases of that.
Yeah. I want to find out the whole, everything about it before we... You know, I always find out what's the holes.
Take this one.
Well, yes, thank you, Neil. Any other, any other public comments or concerns?
I have a pretty short statement. Per 24 VSA 963, when a municipal officer passes away, their office becomes vacant. Within 10 days, the legislative body must post a vacancy notice in at least two public places and near the municipal clerk's office. On August 3rd, 2023, a select board member passed away. As of this letter, on August 28th, it has been 25 days since the vacancy emerged. The public announcement of the vacancy, or the public announcement of the select board's passing was made on August 14th during the select board meeting. Yet there still has been no announcement of the vacancy. There's been no notice published in the Lakes Region Free Press on 8/18/23 or 8/25/23. Neither was an announcement seen on the town vote-in board, official Facebook page, or government website. The situation echoes a similar incident from spring when the select board faced similar concerns. At the core, this is about public access to information, accountability, transparency, and care. Whether it's timely meeting minutes or a complete select board, the town's responsibilities are being compromised. In April, I highlighted violations of open meeting laws, specifically 1 VSA 312B2, which mandates posting minutes within five days. On April 20th, the town acknowledged its mistake and committed to action, including the chair contacting the town manager within four days to ensure the timely posting of minutes, and a commitment to explicitly stating more details about when the board goes into executive session. While the second commitment was met, minutes are still not posted promptly. Of the last 11 meetings since April 20th, seven out of 11 were non-compliant, reflecting a 63...
That is not true.
If you look at, you can definitely see it. The ones that are out compliant are the 8/14 meeting. Minutes were posted on 8/21, which is seven days, which it's five calendar days, not five business days. It's only five calendar days. So that one's seven.
I'm aware of that. Thank you very much.
Well, and you said it's not true.
Have you read the Polkney Charter, by the way? Have you read the Polkney Charter?
No. Some parts of it, it doesn't negate this information. I mean, the days that the meetings are, if you look at one specifically, no, seven.
All of these violations, Alex, what are you expecting to see?
Well, I, so I'm almost stunned at the letter. I said, "I hesitate to propose penalties, but the select board must show commitment through actions. Near promises won't suffice. A strategy with specific steps is necessary. Seventeen other towns in Rutland County use recording secretaries. A path the select board should consider."
Can I just say something first? I'm not trying to be emotional, but we lost a member of our select board, a Parry family, someone that we've been dealing with because the family wanted to keep things personal and they didn't want a big kubla about things. So we worked with our friend, Richard, his family about his illness. We said something to the board that, yes, he is going through some health issues. I spent a lot of time with him July 4th, thinking that we were on the turn up. And his family, they wanted privacy. They didn't want something out there for everybody. So as our select board losing our family, I take offense to you saying that we didn't do what we were supposed to do. I take offense that you're saying we have the deceased of them. We should just drop everything. Everybody's in grieving and even the family. So we took our time to meet with the family.
I didn't write this statute.
So I'm just saying that's what we did as our case. It's very hurtful to even think of someone saying like, "We didn't do this." We just lost a member of our family. So I don't find it humorous at all.
I think it's humorous because it has to be to the widow. I was one of the first folks that even spoke about it and been providing support.
This is enough.
I don't want to hear it.
This is enough. Time out. We're on track.
Yeah, I don't even want to know that one.
I'm not really sure.
That's it.
I only mentioned it because of the law. The law just says that it has to be. I'm just saying...
It does not. You want me to read you the statute like you just quoted the statute?
Vermont State Statute.
You want me to read you the Charter statute? Would you like me to read you the Charter statute?
I don't think that the local bylaws...
It actually does. It actually does.
Okay, no, I didn't...
It actually does.
I didn't know that.
So would you like me to read it to you?
I mean, no.
Would you like me to inform you?
I would.
Because this seems to be a track record that people come in here, they attack me, they attack the board, they make statements that are not fully supported by the evidence.
What do you mean? I have the, okay, according to state law.
Title 24, Appendix Municipal Chapters. Let me read it to you. Chapter 133, some chapter 3, section 306.
Yeah.
Read it, and then come back to the board.
Okay, this is from the exact, I, this is from the exact same place as that.
Read it.
I'm 100%... And I can read you this one, the same one. Like, it's from the same exact place. It's from the same place.
You're conflating the 10-day issue is what you're conflating. So read that with a quick head.
I did read, I thought you meant that, like, did I read a separate document that was written by Polkney? No, I have not read the town's specific bylaws in their entirety, but I have read that part of the Vermont statute. And yes, I'm...
So again, the board is doing things against the statute, and you're pointing them out.
Yes, all I'm just saying was that, all I said was that the vacancy wasn't posted. The whole point of...
Would you like me to read it to you?
Well, read it to me.
Would you like for me to read you this other part? Would you like for me to read you this other part?
I just heard what you read, and it's not correct.
Which, I don't understand how-
The ten-day hearing starts after Paul publishes the notice.
No, 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 it says-
When an elected or appointed officer resigns-
Yes.
Makes another town his or her residence, dies or becomes incapacitated-
Yeah.
The office shall become vacant.
Right, that means the vacancy-
Period. Listen, please, let him speak, Alex. Or we're gonna shut this off.
I am listening.
Let him speak.
A person who fills such a vacancy shall serve until his or her predecessor's term expires, period. The town manager shall cause to be published in a newspaper of general local circulation a notice of a vacancy. There's where you're throwing in, within ten days, the town manager has to publish the vacancy.
You're reading a different thing.
I'm reading the Charter. The Charter controls.
Just stop then.
If the statute is contrary to the Charter, the Charter controls. Any person of legal learning age may, within ten days of the publication, submit his or her name to the town manager as an applicant for the vacancy. It doesn't say the person passes away.
That's the first sentence.
You gotta, you gotta, within ten days, post the notice.
That's what that first sentence says.
No, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't.
It says if they resign, if they move away, or if they die, there's a vacancy. And then it said it must be posted within ten days.
No, it doesn't say that.
It doesn't say that, Alex.
Alex, I thought that-
That's not saying that.
Two years ago, then I mean, edited.
Okay, yeah, I think, I obviously, I think I'm misunderstanding some things. I obviously need to go and read this more in its entirety. I appreciate-
I, I just don't like the attacks when the informant, when the person is attacking me is not fully informed.
It, I'm reading a different part of this statute and realize that-
It's very unsatisfying.
I apologize that you feel unsatisfied. I'm
And this has happened more than once, and I've been cool about it. I've been cool about it, and I said to you on different occasions, well, actually, were you at X and X meeting when this was discussed? No, I wasn't, I didn't know about that.
Yeah, you're talking about the striping, the land striping, and-
It, it, it's a pattern that, uh, you know, I appreciate that you wanna be informed and that you wanna keep this board and me on, on our toes. I appreciate it. Because things get lost in translation, in the busyness, even the busyness of this conversation. So I appreciate it, and it's great that you wanna participate. I think it's noble. But I wish people that wanna participate are fully informed before they go on their social media, before they go in a public meeting, and point fingers at people that are not correct.
I mean, I, it's clearly, it's just a misunderstanding, like, based on-
It's not a misunderstanding.
It is a misunderstanding.
It's not a misunderstanding. When I, when people say to me, you should see what they're saying about you on social media, and it's completely misunderfor, misinformed.
Yeah, I didn't post about this on social media.
I am just saying in general.
I understand it's frustrating.
It's like, it's like the world is just staring at us.
Let's move on, Alex.
I'm understanding where there's the-
Alex, there is no ten days in it. Did you put it in the Free Press?
It will be in the Free Press this Friday.
It's in there. We have sent it out.
The town manager shall cause to be published in a newspaper of general local circulation a notice of a vacancy. Not on the church choir, not on this, not over here, not over there.
So it is, it will be in the paper. Okay?
Yes, I apologize, I didn't mean to make anybody feel attacked. And I have listened to all of the things, um, I understand it's not necessarily satisfactory, but I want each of you to know that I've heard each of your individual concerns and I appreciate your feedback.
And when I'm down here on a Saturday afternoon, so I can meet my five-day technical window, don't tell me I'm not putting the minutes on the website, either. When I'm taking time away from my family to come down here on a Saturday because it's five days.
The point was just to get asked, the point was just to ask for help. I, that's why I pointed that out.
You just rattled off how many times I've failed in the last ten meetings. It's not true.
Let's move on. Let's move on. Any other comments or concerns?
That was my entire statement, so.
I just have a quick question regarding, um, the Route thirty-one. There's going to be a temporary bridge installed first, and I think there were some questions about, I think there was delays of getting permission from some of the property owners, and I was wondering if those, um, have been resolved.
Yes, the state can be fucking with it.
I don't know if there, I wouldn't characterize them as delays. There's discussions that they have. I think I've informed the public in this board on more than one occasion that the state is actually, uh, um, doing the process of negotiating with landowners sooner than they usually would because of the, the vitality of that bridge and the importance of that bridge. Um, I don't know if I've ever said it, where there was a delay. Uh, I mean, I, I'm not privy to all the negotiations, so maybe you have some information that I don't know. Um-
No, I just didn't know if there was a delay because of that.
Probably like just the state, like they did up here, it takes time when they negotiate, um, with, with the landowners. And in the summertime, sometimes the landowners are gone. I know up here, um, oh, what's her name, um, Carrie's sister-in-law, ma, uh, not ma. Ma, well, ma was gone, but the other, Jane, she was on vacation when they were trying to get a hold of her. So that delayed the negotiations two or three weeks, but I don't know where it stands here.
Okay.
But the state usually takes care of that. And we're not really all that privy to it until it's completed, correct?
Usually, correct.
So while it's in the process, you know about as much as we do.
Neil? One other question, just to ask a question. Is the investigation about that oil spill down in Polten, is that over with, any results?
Um,
It's on the state too.
The, the state assigned, uh, uh, I don't know, quite know what their title is, but they signed an investigator. Agency of Natural Resources assigned an investigator to it. I spoke with him. He's talked to some residents in Polten, um, last I've heard, he, actually last week I talked to him, he was gonna keep me abreast if there was any developments. Um, they did, you, you may not know that I reported to this board and the attending public, I think at our last meeting, that it was identified as, uh, it tested for, um, number two diesel fuel and other, uh,
Off-road.
Appears to be, uh, and there were some other contaminants, contaminants in there.
It's serious business, there's a lot.
Yeah.
All right, we just curious to see if they-
Okay?
That just reminded me of another, uh, thing. Um, actually, yesterday, um, late in the afternoon, I don't know if Cheryl might have heard him, but there were two dirt bikes doing wheelies and there must have been close to half a dozen ATVs, um, racing south on Hampshire Hollow Road. They were flying. I saw two that went by my house. So I don't know anybody can do anything about it.
We can.
How many of you pre-reported to, to the Rutland County Sheriff's Department?
Yeah, and we'll take the crews up to their and maybe sit.
Did he pick numbers or anything, Sue?
By a little fast. He didn't sit on the under Hampshire Hollow after the rodeo because trucks were flying through there, so I know he did sit on that under Hampshire Hollow, trying to see them coming back from the rodeo, which take it really fast.
Okay.
Okay, I'll pass on the words to Nina.
All right. Any other comments or questions from the public? All right. Thank you. Um, do I hear a motion to sign the board orders?
Yes, like, make that motion?
Do I hear a second? Second, any comments or questions by the board? All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Motion, Carrie. We do need to go into executive session tonight for personnel matters and two contractual matters.
You not here? Pursuant one VSA section three thirteen eight one eight, taking over the executive session to discuss contract matters. One VSA section three thirteen eight one eight, taking over the executive session to discuss contract matters.
Thanks, Joe. Uh, so that's one motion for executive session. We also need a motion for personnel matters. Use standard language if you want.
Motion, that, for an executive session to discuss personnel matters.
So you, you're making three motions, you're second and three motions.
Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? And Carrie?